Welcome back, ladies and gentlemen. From spring break, those that were able to enjoy it, would you please rise from a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? We just preach. Yeah, they did.
I think you wanted to pray to the flag instead of pledge to the flag.
Yeah, we need to. All right. This time, are there any changes, amendments, or additions or deletions to the agenda?
You have a few in front of you there, but I think they're already noted. The, just some additional information on 8.08, and then revised price quote for items 8.10, and then a different 9.01 for the Human Resources Revised Agenda. So, you have them all there in front of you.
I think it was on the board docs, though, right? Yes, it was put on board docs. Okay. All right. Then we'll move on to approval of the amendment minutes. We'll get this all right in a minute.
I recommend approval of the minutes from the school board meeting March 4th, 2019, and the regular school board meeting March 11th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion? CNN, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. All right, moving on to representation. District Spotlight, the Rookie Teacher of the Year, Ms. Owens. And she is our Communications Officer, if you do not know that.
Lake County School District is a place where our students are always learning and growing into the leaders of tomorrow. It has been said that a good teacher can inspire hope, ignite the imagination, and instill a love of learning. Lake County Schools has teachers across the district who do those very things. Some of them have been in the profession for many years, perfecting their craft, and now serving as leaders on their campuses. Others are new to the profession, but are already making their mark. Every year, we take note of our newer teachers, those who have been in the classroom for three years or less, and we recognize those who are doing outstanding work. Each school chooses a Rookie Teacher of the Year. From that group, we select three finalists, and ultimately honor our district-wide winner. Ashley Lantis, a 7th grade teacher at Wendy Hill Middle School, was one of the finalists for our 2019-2020 Rookie Teacher of the Year.
So, we are in the technology world. No matter what job you're in, or career that you choose, you need to be well-versed in technology, and starting them at a young age gets them those skills that they need. One thing I really do love about teaching is seeing that light bulb go off when they really find something that they love to do, or something that they're good at, and they know they can share with their family at home, and say, "This is what I did today. This is what I'm really good at." And they start to find that their niche, their one thing that they really want to start doing for the rest of their life.
Dawson Shriner, a social studies teacher and football coach at Eustace High School, was another finalist.
The greatest challenge for me as a teacher was relearning how to learn. I came out of college thinking I was like, I knew what I was doing, this is going to be a breeze, it's teaching, but I had my work cut out for me. And it took me about three years to learn what I needed to do, and relearn the specifics of it, but I'm here today, and I think I'm trying to do pretty good at it.
Cindy Torgler, a pre-K ESE teacher at Cypress Ridge Elementary School, was our third finalist.
The days that I... Well, suffice it to say, she's fabulous. And I don't know what happened to the audio, everything was going fine. But it goes on to highlight her, and then at the very end, we find out that it is Ms. Lantis who was chosen as our Rookie Teacher of the Year, and her principal is on there as well, from Wendy Hill Middle School, saying some amazing things about her and the wonderful things that she has done. And I really thought it would have kicked back on by now, but...
Do we have a lip reader?
All three of them are amazing, and we are very happy. We invited them all. I hope that some of them are here with us, and maybe we can actually hear somebody talk in person, other than me. Thank you.
Thank you. Would our three Rookie Teachers of the Year, if you're here, would you please stand?
And that will be played on the Lake County Schools website.
All right. And the principals, the principals that are here, because I know you're proud of them as well, would you stand, please? All right. Great job.
Can we give a chance, just to recognize you, if you come up, the board would love to shake your hands and just further congratulate you again?
We didn't have Dad come up and recognize.
Yeah, and Ashley's proud Dad is here as well.
Hey, Dad, come on up and represent Ashley. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations again. What was unique about this, as we were going around, was, I believe, he was nominated as Rookie Teacher of the Year at his school at one time as well, years back, so that was pretty neat. And then for his lifetime ago, all right. Thank you very much, though, that was great. All right, our next representation is Lake County School Library Month Proclamation, April 2019, by Dr. Emily Weiskopf, Chief of Transformation.
So I got the opportunity to allow and invite Dr. Faith Harris to come up and read the proclamation and kind of talk about National Library Month for us.
Thank you, Dr. Weiskopf. Greetings, Superintendent Carnegie, Chairman Gamble, and Board Members. It's an honor for me to come and share with you all and the County of Lake April School Library Month. This month is going to be an opportunity, well, next month is an opportunity to recognize school librarians and the work that they put into to assist students, to help develop, build literacy skills, help across the content areas, and then promote, most importantly, the initiatives here in Lake County Schools. We have 43 librarians who work very, very hard with their teachers and their students' collaboration, and just to make sure that over $2 million in inventory is disseminated throughout the school year, including classroom libraries, class sets, and things of that nature. So I am going to read the proclamation for next month, and librarians are tasked with the opportunity to push into the classrooms and to do fun and innovative ways to work with students and teachers next month in April. And we have a few librarians here with us this evening as well. So this is the proclamation for Lake County Schools School Library Month, which is April 2019. Whereas April 2019 has been designated the 34th Annual National School Library Month, and whereas school libraries provide materials for teachers and students that will encourage growth and knowledge, and whereas the school libraries provide materials that will develop literacy, culture, aesthetic, appreciation, and ethical standards, and whereas school libraries provide materials which reflect the ideas and belief of religious, social, political, historical, ethnic groups, and their contributions to the American and world heritage and culture, and whereas school libraries provide books to encourage children to read for pleasure, and whereas school libraries provide materials to meet individual needs, varied interests, abilities, socioeconomic backgrounds, and maturity levels of the students served, and whereas school libraries are a fun place for students to go, and all students deserve a well-managed library, to provide for free expression and access to information and ideas. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Lake County Schools does hereby proclaim April 2019 as School Library Month in all of the public schools of Lake County Schools, and calls upon school administrators, teachers, students, and citizens of Lake County to recognize and support this action, and to participate throughout the month of April in the celebration of School Library Month. In testimony whereof, the School Board of Lake County, Florida, and the Superintendent have hereunto subscribed their names and have caused the official seal of the Lake County School Board to hereunto affix on this, the 25th day of March 2019. A copy of the proclamation is hereby placed in the archive records for this board. So, I would like to thank all of the media specialists who work with the CIA Department, that's Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, to ensure that the libraries are ran proficiently, and that the students and teachers have everything that they need.
Thank you, and I'm glad you let us know what that acronym stands for.
Yes. There you go. There you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, our next is recognition of Medal of Honor Day, Honor Day in Florida. Again, Dr. Weiskopf.
Good evening. This is actually a new honorary day that Governor DeSantis has declared. It's actually today, it's called the Medal of Honor Day in Florida, and so I'm just going to read you the letter that he put forth to the school districts. So whereas the sacrifices that veterans and Congressional Medal of Honor recipients have made in serving our country and protecting democratic values worldwide hold a special place in the history of the United States of America and in Florida, and whereas Florida annually recognizes March 25th as Medal of Honor Day, as designated in Florida, statute 683.147, and whereas to commemorate this day, public officials, schools, private organizations, and all Floridians are called upon to honor recipients of the Congressional Medal of Honor, who distinguish themselves through their bravery and gallantry during wartime while serving as members of the United States Armed Forces, and whereas public schools are encouraged to coordinate instruction at all grade levels, encouraging patriotism and commemorating Medal of Honor Day. Now therefore, I, Ron DeSantis, Governor of the State of Florida, do hereby extend greetings and best wishes to all observing March 25th, 2019, as Medal of Honor Day in Florida. So as I worked with Sherri Owens, and we have put out this to schools, and there were some celebrations and activities that happened today in honor of Medal of Honor Day in Florida. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gamble, can I make a statement about that? You went so fast, I didn't get a chance. I wanted to just point out, Ms. Caldwell's here from Umitel Elementary School, she's the librarian there. She's the librarian that made the national, I think international news with the book vending machine. So seeing that it's the Library Month, I figured we would just tell you again how proud of we are. It was really, really cool to see Umitel Elementary School on CNN and the Today Show. So, thank you for everything all three of you ladies do back there, and all the librarians.
It's my understanding also that the principal was contacted from reporters from other countries.
Yeah, that's what I, that's...
You know, that was what was fascinating as well there, that they were like, wow, this is great. So that's a great thing to put our vending machines to use, you know? Rather than the things that are not good for us, that is something that's good for us.
That's awesome. So, thank you, Mr. Gamble.
You're very welcome.
While you're talking about it, I think it'd be a good time to go ahead and have a motion and a vote to approve the proclamation for Schools Library Month.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? CNN, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Probably the same for Memorial thing.
Do we need to vote on Memorial?
That was not a proclamation.
Oh.
All right. Now, next up is 404, is the District High School Athletic Recognition by Don Hogan, our district athletic director.
Good evening, Superintendent, School Board, and parents. This evening, we'd like to recognize three of our outstanding student athletes from our previous sports seasons. We're going to start with the fall season. We had an outstanding football player, and the sports writers just came out with their All-State teams, so I'm going to hand this to Mr. Gamble to start with. Our young man from the fall sport was All-State in football selection. It's Jamari Yeoman from Mount Dora High School. Jamari's accomplishments, while at Mount Dora, he was a three-year varsity starter at safety. He tied a single-season record for interceptions. He was voted first-team All-Lake County Daily Commercial, honorable mention All-Central Florida by the Orlando Sentinel, and first-team All-State 4A Florida sports writers. Let's give a round of applause for Jamari. From our winter sports season, we have two ladies from Leesburg High School. These two young ladies are the first FHSAA weightlifting state champions in Lake County in either boys' or girls' weightlifting, and they both performed under Coach Boyer at Leesburg High. Our first state champion that we'll recognize is Crystal Howison. Crystal was a state champion in 101-pound class in her career. She had two state qualifiers. She was a fourth-place state finisher in 2018, and this past season, she was a district, regional, and state champion 2019. Let's give her a round of applause. And our last state champion is Yasmin Heflin, also from Leesburg, in the 183-pound weight class. Yasmin qualified for state three times in her career. She had a fifth place at state in 2017. She had a fourth place at state in 2018, and this year, she brought home the gold, and was state regional champion for this season for Leesburg High. So let's give her a round of applause. I just want to reiterate that these young ladies led Leesburg Weightlifting Team to a runner-up. The team was runner-up in the state, which is a great accomplishment. They almost were team state champs, and it's the best finish ever by a weightlifting team, boys or girls, in Lake County. So that's a great accomplishment for Leesburg High, these ladies, and also our young man, Jamari, from Mount Dora High School.
I just want to recognize the coach from Leesburg.
Coach Boyer. And Coach Scott is here also.
Congratulations to you. Congratulations to you, well done. Yes, I forgot about the principal as well, from Leesburg High School. I know he was proud that these recipients won these. You know? And I was present there when they received their awards, and it was wonderful. And then when they announced that Leesburg, as a team, came in second for the state, that was even more. If they'd have just won one more lift, they would have been first place. Huh?
Still mourning it.
One more lift, that's all right, but we're proud of each of you, and thank you very much.
Well done. Thank you all.
All right. Y'all making fun of me over there. I'm serious, if they would have just came in third place in another event or something, they would have won, so... I know, I know. All right. Public input. Aren't you glad to be here this evening? Where else would you be? Public input, we have Mr. Stuart Klett. How behave down there?
Good evening. I'm Stuart Klett with LCEA. Each of you sitting on the dais tonight have either during your campaigns or interviews with press, have recognized the need to increase teacher pay, fix our pay inequities, reduce teacher turnover, and increase school grades. All of these issues are interconnected. So what do we know? We know that fixing an unjust pay structure will result in fewer teachers leaving the county because of money. We know that schools with more experienced teachers and low turnover have consistently higher grades and better student outcomes. We know we have a tendency to not rehire annual contract teachers without informing them of their weaknesses and giving them a chance to improve. We know that in some situations, students and parents drive instruction and discipline, not the professionals. We know the legislature is not going to significantly increase their contribution to public schools. We know that we have to give teachers better work conditions, smaller classes, and more money in their pockets. As a teacher, it's very disheartening to work with little or no raises for years while watching the district maintain a business-as-usual spending pattern. Keeping good teachers and providing quality environment creates a positive learning experience for students, and will increase your school grades. I know, this is not just me speaking, LCEA speaks on behalf of the majority of your teachers. Let's keep our teachers and provide a terrific learning experience for our students. Just as a little side note, I noticed that the proclamation for media centers, today it was announced who is getting the best and brightest rewards for highly effective and effective teachers in Lake Counties. Just as a side note, our wonderful legislature does not include Media Center and all the great things they do as being worthy of the best and the brightest bonus. So, we have some work to do, gang. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Tibbetts. And I would say, Dr. Tibbetts, welcome back. You've been missed.
Superintendent Carnegie, Board Members, I want to say how joyous it is to be back, and thank you for your thoughts and prayers these last five months. I've missed being here, and hopefully we'll make it a habit of being back. Having said that, I've made some observations while I'm away. One of them was today, and I almost ran off the road singing hallelujahs. I saw the sign gone at the Dabney property, and I've checked, and the check has cleared the bank. Use that money wisely. Speaking of money, in this past weekend, I was looking at the results of the NCAA Basketball Tournament, and they listed the arenas that they were played in, and one after another, after another, after another, was carrying a corporate name. And those corporations had paid big bucks to name the arenas. While I was gone, I saw the naming of another one of our facilities for a fine educator. But I would tell you, the time has come for you to create a naming committee. There's too much money out there for you not to seek it out. As we complain about the legislature not funding us, don't look sources of income and ignore them. Finally, I want to talk about the Altoona Charter School. As you well know, I'm not a big fan of charter schools, and typically, I am opposed to them, but I would tell you, in this particular instance, the Altoona School is an integral part of that part of this county. It's central to the psyche of the people that live there, even if their kids don't go there. It's fish fries, it's jam sessions, it's hosting of various events. The history of this school, long even before it was a charter, is so critical, and I've talked to the superintendent about it, and I have been assured that she and her staff are working to correct the errors that you so diligently pointed out. But please help them. They need to succeed, and they need your assistance. And again, thank you very much, it's great to be back.
Okay, we have one more speaker, but I need to ask the attorney something first, since we've already approved the agenda as it is.
We haven't approved the consent agenda item.
Okay. So we're going to pull 10.10 for discussion. Okay? And so we'll allow Mr. Yoakum now to come forward.
We're going to go ahead and recommend approval of the consent agenda items minus that one, and then we'll come back to that one, and I'll recommend approval separately, as we're pulling it separately.
Okay, well, I was just going to let him speak to it, and then we just go ahead and do, that's okay. All right, we'll do it that way, it's fine with me. She's in charge.
That's the only way I know to do it.
All right, Superintendent, go ahead. I'm not looking that way, y'all.
I recommend approval of the consent agenda items 8.01 to 10.09 and 10.11.
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion and a second on the so moves. All right. Any further discussion? CNN, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side, thank you.
We skipped the attorney report.
Well, we're going to come back to it. Save some money on that. Okay. All right. So before we go to the 10.10 for discussion and talk about it, we'll allow the attorney to speak first.
It's not necessary, the only thing I was going to let you know about was the Dabney sale being finalized, and Dr. Tibbetts already took care of that.
Thank you, Dr. Tibbetts. Should we pay you our attorney fee tonight? He didn't hear what I said, but that's okay. We'll talk to you later about it. All right, now, we will move on to the agenda item, 10.10. Superintendent?
I think Mr. Yoakum's going to come and speak to that item first, if that's all right with you.
No. I'm not looking up.
And then we'll be happy to address any questions or concerns you might have following his comments.
I need another spring break. Go ahead, Mr. Yoakum.
Vance Yoakum, I write the blog fiscalrangers.com. I had looked at this, and you're spending almost $20,000 to send 14 people to a conference in South Florida. Now, I believe in continuing education training, and I support that. My purpose here is to just question, there wasn't anything justifying what this PLC Conference was, the Professional Learning Communities. Now apparently, I've found that within the teaching community, they know what it is, but I looked, I looked at articles on it and everything, and I got to say, I didn't see anything really concrete that told me what the value was in sending 14 people to learn this technology or process. So I would like to hear, you know, something about explaining what PLC is, and why it has a value here, and I'm sure you have an answer for that, and that's what I wanted to hear, because it was not in any of the information. And then, just one other thing is, you have a final orders expulsion, which is the next, actually, you already approved it, 10.11, but maybe you could just explain the final orders expulsion process, and just so it's on the record and people know what that is, because all you have is a piece of paper in there saying a student was thrown out, but I'd like, I think it would be interesting to hear, you know, some examples of what causes a situation like that, so maybe parents are aware of it. Thank you.
So if y'all would like to know about the PLC Institute, Dr. Weiskopf would love to tell you about it. It's a... Dr. Weiskopf, can you also speak to what Title I funds are supposed to be used for, and which internal accounts of fundraisers donations, like, do you know that information? Or would that be Mr. Ward?
So the Professional Learning Communities Institute is what I commonly refer to as, almost like church for educators. So it's sort of this place where you get some renowned speakers and researchers that talk about the object of... talk about the object of, the idea of school improvement. And so, that really is a place where you can learn, and I will tell you that two years ago, and I did, I was the person who sent the email out that said, "Here's an opportunity for you. I suggest you go." And one of the things that probably, that you need to know about me, is I would rather send the majority of people to the same thing, so that we all have the same message, and we can all move forward together, versus allowing one to go here, and one to go here, and one to go here, and one to go here. So, I rarely send out an email that suggests people to go somewhere, especially out of, out of town, to a conference, and so this is one of the... Am I up? All right, I'm out.
I didn't really do this a lot.
I am. Are you good? So, this is one of the only opportunities that I always push for, for people to go to. It was a process that's been done many years ago. Rickard, Richard DeForre, Rick DeForre, he's now deceased, his wife Becky DeForre, two of the founders of it. It is definitely nationwide, where we come in and we talk about remediation, acceleration, all kids can learn. It is an opportunity for people to really get the pedagogy behind why we should all have the belief system, and why it's such an urgency in education to allow all students to have equal opportunities. And so, I can tell you that, two years ago, I asked Chairman Luke at the time to attend with me, so she could also speak to it as well. I also, the year before, asked that, at the time, was, was a person I worked with, my boss, so I asked Diane Corny to go with me as well. So, both of those people have attended an institute and can probably tell you it's one of the best experiences that they've had. I will tell you, when we attended in Jacksonville about a year and a half ago, we did not get to see some of the key players, which is why I put it out again, because this is an opportunity for us to see Anthony Muhammad, which is, he wrote a book about culture and change, and he's the, actually, he was the person that I based a lot of my summer institute. If you attended any part of summer leadership, the day, the third day, he was part of the, he was the voice of reason that kind of guided me through that presentation. We'll be able to see him, Mike Mattis, some, some real key people, some key players that actually have a big voice in education today. So, what happens is, many of the schools are going, referring to the budget, most of them are using their own funding, so if they have, I just said, if you have any kind of professional learning funding left over, this would be a great opportunity for you to go. School's out, so they're not leaving students. It's the week before leadership, so they're taking an opportunity to use some of their time right before we come back and do some money together to go. I've also asked that nobody, no principal send an assistant principal or anybody else on their staff unless they've gone themselves, because it really does need to be kind of guided from the top. You do learn some new things that can only really be led by the school leader, so I'm very much an advocate of the school leader going and taking somebody, but not sending people that are not a school leadership to go. And I think, I see you shaking your head that you can say that that's very affirmative in terms of, it is guided from the top, but it does take a team of people to really put into place. Kind of pushes the status quo of education and how we can think differently about the processes we use, and why it's so important that all kids have access to all opportunities. And it, it really is a shot in the arm that I think everybody needs, so I actually prefer to put in a large amount of people going to the same place, and I really only advocate for a few a year, and this is one of the institutes that I definitely advocate for. So, I don't know if Ms. Luke or Ms. Corny would like to add to that at all.
No, I, I just, when I saw it, I just said that I was very sad I wasn't going, because it was probably one of the most informative and inspirational conferences that I've attended, and I've attended a lot, and I believe that we will certainly get our money's worth. And I'm excited for those going and the opportunity that they have after the sessions to debrief and plan and collaborate together on behalf of the district.
So, one of the things that happens with the process that right now is in board policy that probably is something that I'll be looking at as we continue to work with Neola, is that once we reach a $50,000 threshold, then the next school has to bring it to you to the board. So, I would be very sad if these particular schools, because the other schools that are going do not need board approval. So, you already have a large group of people going, but once we reach over $50,000, then all of it, then it has to come to the board. So, the schools that you see here listed would not be able to go, but yet the rest of the schools would. And so, shame on us for just the fact that their timing is different, that they actually reached the $50,000 threshold to not allow the schools to go. So, I just, I'd like for you to consider that, because once we reach that threshold, then all of a sudden, they have to go on board approval. Does that make sense? So, probably not the best way to structure that. So, we should, that's one of the policies I'm looking at to think about when we, when I bring back to you some policy revisions, to think about what might that look like that would be different in terms of approval for large trips like this.
So, that's how, I was wondering how these particular schools got selected, so it was just literally like they were last in line?
They were in last in line. And again, I'm happy that as many people are going, and that they've, they've decided to use some of their professional learning funds. Again, they're using funds that are already allocated for professional learning opportunities or for training, and so they're using this year's dollars, what they have left. And so, it's not that we allocated more. People had to have it in their, their, and their budget are ready to use.
And I think it's right on that we're going to one particular versus being spread out. That way, we're not trying to bring all these different ideas in and just confuse the matter. We're trying to just get...
Right. So, we have one vision, one direction, and we can all kind of get on board, and there's lots of great conversation around this, I know. And when we went a few, a year and a half ago, there was a lot of conversation around. This is where our acceleration remediation block started, and why it was so important that we have one of those opportunities, where the idea that kids should have the opportunity to redo work, that the, this is where the whole premise of, what's important is that they master the standard, not that they master it by the time that you set a deadline for. So, all of that thinking comes out of this institute and these people who lead the charge on it.
I can tell you that, two things. The state of Arkansas, the delegation in the state of Arkansas has allocated millions of dollars to the PLC project, and they've partnered with Solution Tree, and they have picked elementary middle schools and high schools, and they have outside consultants coming in specifically work around the PLC project because they're trying to turn around their schools. And they're on year two, this is year two of the implementation, so they're coming together to review what it looks like, so maybe some of that data will be released too, because they've done it statewide. I would look, look for that. And the second thing I will tell you is that during one of the sessions, I literally looked at the administrators that were sitting next to me, and was like, "I am so glad you guys are here, and you're hearing what they're saying." Like, there's nothing better that can happen in Lake County schools than what they are suggesting right now to happen for our kids. It was a very, very powerful conference, so I agree.
Is it, is it supposed to be Title II? It says Title I.
No, some schools are using their, so some are using their Title I professional learning funds, so probably...
So, Title I has a category of professional learning?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't realize. I thought Title II was professional learning.
And it is, right? So, we're not, but we're not necessarily using district funds to fund school schools. Again, I just put out the email and said, "Hey, here it is again. We have the opportunity to see some really great people. These are the A-listers. I'd encourage you, if you have any funds left over, consider this conference."
Okay. That makes sense. So, just reiterate, the district's not paying for this. Each individual school is paying for it out of funds. That could only be used for professional learning, because that's what they were designated for, so. Okay?
That's important.
Any further?
So, how many are going total?
There are, hang on a minute, because I just, I lost track.
Fourteen.
That's just in this presentation.
That was just on these, just for those few schools.
That's just in this presentation.
Yeah, there are seven district staff members, myself included, and 30 school administrators, staff members, and so that, and those are totaled less than 50,000, so then if you add the 14 over, then you've got about, and there's a good bit of us, probably 45 people going, 50 people going.
I was going to offer help with reservations, but I don't think that'll work.
You were going to offer what?
Help with reservations for dinner, but...
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm interested.
Okey-dokey.
All right. Anything else?
All right. Anything else, y'all?
Thank you.
Superintendent? I'm ready for you now.
All right, thank you. I recommend approval of item 10.10, registration and travel for the PLC Institute.
For moved.
Second.
Now, motion second. Any further discussion? CNN, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say zide. All right, now moving to discussion. All right, Superintendent's report.
I did just, our librarians have left, but just wanted to recognize them and the hard work that they do. A little fun fact, my mother was a school librarian, and so they're, they hold a very special place in my heart, and I, I grew up in the school library and just know the hard work and the, the love of literature that they instill in our students, so I appreciate them. We are also joining districts across the country in celebrating Public Schools Week. We'll be highlighting the excellence, creativity, and opportunities that public schools provide for more than 50 million students around the country. So, you can follow our social media posts using the hashtag #PublicSchoolsProud and learn more about the many ways that our strong public schools are preparing our kids for the future. And also, our talented artists are on display, so don't forget that. We mentioned that, I think, at the last meeting, but just a reminder that that is happening through the end of the month, March 31st, at Lake Square Mall. We have 300 pieces of student artwork from Leesburg Schools on display, so you need to go check them out at the mall. It's quite impressive. And just to, to remind everybody that we are in round two of our school safety drills. There was about eight drills conducted today. They went very well, and so we're continuing those throughout the month, and these are required by state statute, as with other drills. We're not announcing them in advance, however, we are doing a call-out message to parents, telling them that we are doing the drills. We're just not telling them when we're doing the drills. And principals will reach out after the drill so that parents know that the drill has happened. And this is with the same protocol that we followed last time that went well, and people were appreciative that we were providing that information. In addition, we had some letters of condolences, one that was sent for John Quixote. He's the father of Natalie Heitman, who is a program specialist in our curriculum instruction assessment department. And then one to the family of Jack and Cindy Miller, and the loss of their daughter Sue Ellen in Selmo also went out. That's all.
All right. Board member comments? Mr. Mathias.
I've just got a few, then, and they really were based on public input. So, Mr. Clatt came up and spoke about the low pay and whatnot, and yet our spending habits have stayed the same. It's very interesting that over spring break, Dr. Weiskopf and I had an opportunity to meet with a group of teachers, and they almost brought up the very same thing. It was kind of interesting. And yet, what they spoke about was, how can you buy buses and not give us raises? And so, that keen understanding that there are different buckets of funds, that we can't just draw from one and let it fill into the other. I think it's very important for the district to get that message out, and that maybe in the form of a workshop or something like that, inviting, inviting the LCEA to be part of the solution with us, so that we're getting our message out, I think would be very healthy. The other is, is it's interesting, Dr. Tibbetts, you and I go round and round about this naming rights thing, and yet we're not on different pages completely. But, but just the other day, we honored Tammy Jenkins, who was Teacher of the Year for the state of Florida. And on Facebook, she posted with all of her nieces standing in front of the, of the plaque that memorialized her for her, for her service up to now and future, and also inspiring generations to follow. And so, I think there's a completely different, and you know I'm about the fiscal side, but there's something about when we connect to a great educator, and when we can pass that down, then I will always be in favor of that. So, sports arenas, other areas may have an opportunity for us, just so you know where I stand. But, but there's also that great need for us to recognize great educators and that, the legacy that they leave for future kids to follow. The last is, and the most concerning to me, was during spring break, we've had two suicides based on Parkland young, young kids. And so, that post-traumatic is real, and we have to be ever vigilant. I would encourage anyone that sees, sees behavior, they don't know exactly what to do about it, we have Speak Out, or that you can anonymously leave a tip, but, but Lake County, I am fortunate to serve with a board that has taken the initiative to really fund mental health, and so we'll turn it around, but it was desperately sad to read about those two young kids. So, on that happy note...
I wanted to really quickly thank Chad and his staff. He had several people come out to meet with our interns, March 13th, and speak to them about their upcoming, they graduate in May, and their certification process, and they gave them some hiring tips, Mrs. Christidas and Ms. Purdy from Eustis Heights, and the principal from Mutilla Elementary School came out and gave them interview tips and resume tips, and, and they exchanged some, some good information, and we appreciate the partnership that we have with Lake County Schools very much. And we're excited to have some future teachers that we can hire that are, that are excited and ready to be a part of our family. I also wanted to thank Carmen. She, she wasn't here this evening, but she's agreed to come to one of our Lake County Knights meetings, so we have our years one through three teachers, and she's coming to meet with them. We're actually going to meet at the Apple Mart at Rhymes Elementary School so that they can get some free stuff, and she's going to tell them about some of the mini grants that they do, and she's going to tell them about all of the things that the, that the Education Foundation does for teachers in Lake and Sumter County. So, we're super grateful for, for all of you guys and the work that you do with partnering with our interns to, to make sure we get some great teachers recruited here. The Steam Bowl was a success. I know that, we'll probably hear about that in a minute too, from somebody a little closer, but that event is just amazing. Our students have such a good time. It's challenging, it's rewarding. I actually went with a parent this time who had never been before, and I told her the best part is trying to figure out the problems for her, for yourself. And when I came back around, I was like, "Did you figure this out?" She was like, "I don't think I've answered any of them yet." So, it's very challenging, and the students did so well, and the design challenges were amazing, and all hands on deck. I know Ms. Cockroft's department, just everybody comes in, it's all in, everybody in, so we appreciate every, everybody's time and effort to make that such a success for the kids. And then we had our, a lot. We had our Rookie Teacher of the Year celebration. All of us came, and then spring break came, and here we are. So, I just wanted to congratulate all the finalists in the, in the winter, and tell them that we're super happy that they're succeeding in their first couple of years, and, and it seems disingenuous because they're not here anymore. So, I'm glad everybody got well rested over spring break, and we're back, we're clearly back at it, right? It's a Monday, so thank you.
Yes, it certainly was a whirlwind of excitement heading into spring break. I did have a note about Steam Bowl and how fun it was to, you know, boy, I love when they put us to work. I think a number of us got involved in the engineering challenge and trying to coordinate that as the teams came over to test their models, and that was, it was, oh my goodness, it was, it was pretty eye-opening to see some of the, the creativity that came out of those kids, because really, they think about some things in ways that, you know, I wouldn't have thought about first. So, it's, it's nice to see that creative engineering, and I know there's no shortage of work that goes into that from the CIA Department, so congratulations to you. Miss Cockroft, you and your team for putting together such a wonderful event for, for students to be challenged. And then, yes, we had the Rookie Teacher of the Year, which is fantastic, which gets a big shout out to the Ed Foundation, because as was highlighted that night, you know, not every district does that. It's, it's pretty rare to see districts celebrate their, their rookie teachers, and, and to be able to get that sort of encouragement early on in their career is, is, I think, really critical and important. I've, I've really reflected on an observation I've had as, as this night has progressed, and that is really how this administration has pushed the envelope when it comes to breaking down the status quo of just because we've done things in education for decades doesn't necessarily make them the right way of doing things and challenge our thinking. And I think a lot of that challenging our thinking has come in the literacy world. I, I've had great value in myself in attending some of those summer leadership institutes that you all have put on for, for our own district staff, and, and those ideas, I say, yes, this is brilliant. I cannot wait to see this implemented 100% buy-in across the district. And, and sometimes, some of those outside-the-box ideas are tough to embrace, right? When you've been doing something, or as long as, as long as we've been in school. One of our rookie teachers, I think, had mentioned in the video, was it Mr. Snyder? Mr. What's his, Snyder? Oh, gosh. Anyway, he, he had mentioned that, in the video, that...
Mr. Snyder, Coach Snyder.
Yeah, that's it. That's what I said. That he had to relearn how to learn, right? I mean, just because we sat in rows 30 years ago, and, or longer, in school, you know, that doesn't mean that's the best approach anymore, right? That we want to see the collaboration, the students to defend their thinking. As I talked, as, as I was thinking about the media specialists, this was one of those key places where I've seen some incredible innovation occur this year, and I want to, I want to highlight some of that, because I think that too often, you, you think that you're just going to go to a library, you're going to pick a book off the shelf, you're going to have somebody there scan it out, and then they scan it back in when you come. And that's really not what's happening, that we have, we have media specials, and they're teaching lessons, right? So, it's bizarre to me as well, that the legislature would say that these are not instructional people and leave them out of all the, the pay categories and bonuses that our instructional people are getting, because they're, they're teaching lessons too. I've seen some schools take an innovative approach this year, where they've embraced the idea of, of disregarding levels, right? If a kid is interested in a book, and it doesn't have the pink dot on it, but it's got the purple dot, go ahead and look at it anyway. Expose the kids to a wide variety of texts, and let them, let them, let their interests kind of determine where they go in the library. That, that's what makes it fun, makes it enjoyable. And, and I've also seen some schools take an approach this year where you don't have to wait every eight days to go back to the library to switch your book, right? Because if you finish this thing early on, well, why, why hold on to the same book for eight more days, just because that's when it's going to be your class's turn to go back to the library? Instead, they've made opportunities for the kids to go back more frequently, switch out their books, and get a new one. So, I mean, that's the kind of stuff that's, that's outstanding, and I know we've got media specialists throughout the district that are implementing those sorts of new ideas, and, and I've seen other schools start to transform their, their libraries or media centers into something more dynamic space that is kind of outside the mold of a traditional library that we might expect. And so, kudos to you all for doing that, and, and, and kudos to, to you all in this School Library Month.
Well, thank you very much. I also attended, I think we, well, we were all at Rookie Teacher of the Year, and I wanted to extend congratulations to Ashley Lantis, our winner, but also all of our teachers. Being a rookie teacher is obviously very challenging and hard, and we lose a lot of teachers after our, after third year, and it's, I think it's really special that we in Lake County celebrate our third-year teachers, because that is such a critical time, and they need so, so, they really need so much support at, at that time. And it's a fun event. It's, it's like a giant pep rally. So, I wanted to address the question about the final orders for expulsion. Ms. Sabrina Dillon-Banks is here. I'll just try and briefly bring it up. In general, parents should, in theory, know what the infractions are, because it goes out in the code of conduct, which we try and stay, like, I stay very involved with Ms. Banks with the code of conduct. I actually have a meeting, I think, this week. And some of the things are what are called Cessor violations, which would be like bringing a weapon to school, a razor blade. Some of the violations can be your fourth violation, the, if you've done four suspensions, then you get a, an expulsion. And a lot of these are per state law. Some of these can then come before the board or before a panel. Scream at me if I say anything wrong. To be reevaluated for leniency, and I've sat, I've sat in, the whole board has sat in leniency hearings, and I've sat in committee leniency hearings as well. So, those, that's a way that children can, instead of being expelled, can maybe do an alternative placement in an alternative school for their sentence. So, is that reasonable? Okay. So, and then, the final thing, I had the pleasure of visiting Fruitland Park today. I got to see, I think it was called, is that a learning walk? Yes, I got to see my first learning walk, and with Ms. Weiskopf, and I...
Renee Dudley.
Renee Dudley, I'm so sorry. My chest blanked. And I, it was really nice. I got to see some really nice learning going on, some of the techniques that we talk about, some really good teaching. Manipulatives were brought out for teaching fractions, which I think are confusing for every kid. At least, they were for me. And it was just really nice to see the diversity of teaching that we have going on, and all of the education. It was just, there's a lot of hard work happening in our schools, and Fruitland Park's a great school, so, that's all I have.
All right. Superintendent mentioned about the art in the mall, and Mr. Mathias has mentioned this before about when the Christmas trees were out there at the mall, about the new owner, about getting involved and trying to, to help us in the Lake County, and I appreciate him doing this also with the art as well. And they talked about the Rookie Teacher of the Year. We were missing a key component there that night, and that was Doug. He was not able to be there because he was sick, but he's a big orchestrator and organizer of that, and so, we were kind of like, where do we go? Well, we need Doug, you know, because he pretty much tells you, you go there, you go there, you go there, and you do this. And we also were able to give out all the gifts that night correctly. Yeah, I got instructed on that before they all got there. This is what you need to tell them. I'm not telling them that. Okay? But I'd just like to say also that I'm glad that each of you had a good time at spring break, and we're back to finish the rest of this, this year. But I, I just want to say something. Tonight, we've had some laughter up here at each other and with each other, but I'm glad that I work with a board that's diversified, that we're willing to work together. We know where each other's weaknesses may or may not be. Everybody knows mine. I can't speak plainly all the time. But, but the thing is, we work together to try to benefit and make this district the best district in the state, in the United States, as far as I'm concerned. Each of us have this district at heart. We care about it. And we may make, we may make mistakes every now and then, but when we do, and we recognize that, we do everything we can to correct it. But we work together, and I'm glad that I can say, I work with a board that really works together. We've not had an argument so far that I know of, and we've not filled this room, because people want to come see the arguments. But I appreciate that we were willing to work together and help each other with the other weaknesses that the other person may have, the other one that's stronger picks it up, because I'll tell you, and I've told everybody whenever I was running, and I'm not doing this because I'm up for election, I'm not, not this year at least. But the thing is, my background is not education. My background is behind the scenes and the other things there, construction and all that. And that's what this board is made up of. We have three distinct educators up here. Mr. Mathias and I, we, he's an educator, I guess you might say too, because he did go to college and finish, but he could teach. But the thing is, what I'm saying is, we're well diversified, that we work together, and we try to come together to make this thing happen for the benefit of the students of Lake County. And one last thing I'd like to say is, and I saw this on Facebook, and it, and it is really true, the government does not financially support anything, it's the taxpayers. The money that is provided, it may be from a government grant, it may be from the state or the federal, whatever it might be, but somewhere, it came from the taxpayers of this country, and that's where the backbone of this country is, is through the taxpayers. So, I'd just like to say thank you to each one, and we are trying to work together. Mr. Clatt, we are trying to do what we can, but legislation ties our hands on some things.